Here.
Councilman Wester. Councilman Jacob. Councilman Groban.
Here.
Councilman Keating.
Here.
Councilman Svenner. Councilman Galvin.
Here.
Councilman Maza. President Gonzalez.
Here. Please stand for the player and the political leaders led by Councilman Keating.
Oh my God, as we legislate for our community, and as long as justice is in our favor, all you have to call all, and we see that all of them, give us strength to follow it regardless of what you consider.
I plead to you to consider the high and the United States of America and to reward the force of strength, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This is a regular meeting of the City Council as incorporated in the annual meetings notice of 2012, which was filed through the City Court's office and posted on the bulletin board on December 27, 2011, and sent to the Star River and Home Motors Tribute in compliance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law of New Jersey. I will now move the public speaking portion of the meeting. Any taxpayer resident wishes to address City Council, you may do so at this time. Once again, any taxpayer, please come up to the podium.
My name is Ellen.
Could you speak into the microphone, please? Your name and address would be heard.
Ellen Kovak, 727 Vicki Avenue.
Okay, Ellen Kovak.
Thank you all for your years of dedication to our city. I'm here because, like last week, I am interested in a resolution that would encourage our Congress to overturn the Citizens United support ruling a couple of years ago, which allowed unlimited and undisclosed funds towards elections, federal elections, including presidential election. And I'm hoping that people from other states and other cities have been assigned individually on online positions in order to just build such a groundswell of support for a constitutional amendment that would prohibit unlimited spending on power elections, that our Congress would feel supported and encouraged about. I think that we may have the power of the resolution, I mean, to legal counsel.
Yes, let's go. We have a topic, and we will only discuss it this evening, isn't it, Jada?
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other taxpayer resident who wishes to address City Council, you may do so at this time. Once again, any taxpayer resident who addresses City Council, you may do so at this time. Seeing none, I close the podium, speaking portion. This evening, we have some guests with us. We had invited representatives from public service to come and speak with us, and I'm happy to say that we have two representatives present. Gentlemen, if you mind coming up to the podium, give us your names and titles, so we can hear what you represent for us. We really appreciate you taking the time out to come to see me and talk to us a little bit about, as I'm sure you're concerned, as much of the state was concerned, was when these hurricane sandstorm hit, of all the different issues and concerns that there had been, so please.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Happy holidays to everyone, and it's a pleasure to come back and speak with everyone, and be back in the beautiful city of Elizabeth, of course, I appreciate that. You know, with the help of Ms. Roberts, we had prepared some literature to pass out to everyone, rather than wasting the council's time by me reading verbatim. There's some excerpts in there on how we address storm restoration, that process, how we prioritize emergency services, and some information as well about our infrastructure, from generator station to switch yard to substation to our individual customers. But rather than me comment on that, we'd like to open the floor up to anyone who has a question. We'd like to hear from you, the council members, and any concerns you have regarding the storm, as we all know, epic portion.
Well, as you know, we're all concerned with a couple of things. One was the communication that was being placed with regard to, you know, the lights, you know, being restored, service being restored, and the length of time it took for the power to be restored. I believe that it was up to 10 days here in some parts of the city of Elizabeth that the power, you know, not been restored. I know that earlier this month, the Board of Public Utilities, you know, met, and, you know, they were concerned also with the same things, and indicated actually the president of the Board of Public Utilities gave an ask to all the utility companies, and those to various in particular, communication of the length of time it took to restore the power. I'd like to hear what is going on. You know, the president of public service said some things about with the substations, maybe moving them and building them or moving them away from where they are presently, the installation of the smart meters, things of that nature, just wanted to hear what maybe public service is doing at this time, so that this way we could hopefully prevent some of these things from occurring in the future, and we can communicate much better with our residents. I know public service did hold conferences daily with elected officials, but a lot of times, a lot of the information we were getting was not very useful to us, and we weren't getting any specific times and places where people were going to be, and how long it's going to take to get, you know, power back to run. So if you could tell us, where are you now since the storm, in terms of moving into the future with these concerns?
First of all, my name is Dennis Zazali. I'm the regional manager for all of our customer support throughout the state of New Jersey. So I, just to put it respectfully, I have gentlemen like Dennis and ladies that handle the top hundreds, five hundreds of thousands of customers in the state of New Jersey, of which the city of Elizabeth has a dedicated record. So when we talk about communications, the level of frustration that I heard throughout the storm, as well as where we are right now, was how much information could be given in short period of time. And when we talk about epic storms, and we move the numbers till, you know, till the next day, we all understand the level of storm that was that we experienced, but we had 1.7 to 1.8 million customers out of 2.1 million that we had statewide, 80% of the state was out of power. So when we're talking about communications and the level of detail that certain customers were asking us in the first few days, we were actually trying to rebuild the transmission infrastructure to the switching station infrastructure, to the substation infrastructure, and we had little detail in the beginning. You commented about the mail view from the Ad Day, that seemed to work fairly well on a global perspective, but on a detailed perspective, it fell a little bit short of our expectation, as well as yours. We put this new infrastructure in place, hoping that we would get a storm that nobody else, you know, that we've seen before. We didn't expect a storm twice the size of anything we had ever seen, which was certainly frustrating to us also. In terms of things that we had done a little differently, trying to improve the way we do things as a utility, when we knew the storm was going to be of some magnitude that we were not aware of, one of the things that we did do, and I tip my hat to the president of our company, we actually hired artists, tree surgeons, hundreds of them, prior to the storm, trying to cut trees and do the best we could to main circuits and circuits that were affecting hospitals, okay? Because that's our first line of defense, hospitals, life and safety. So that was really the first time in my 25 years at the utility, I had ever seen us proactively go out and try to help, you know, what was going to stem the tide of the storm. It may not sound like a lot to everyone here, but that may have gotten power back to hospitals 24 hours sooner than what we planned we did, some around hours, some around for a few days, but in those first few days, we certainly got the majority of hospitals across the state of New Jersey back in power. So little things, and I say little, but things like that, I'm sure are going to be part of local protocol. In terms of communications with the city of Elizabeth, use Dennis as an example, you know, Dennis has conduit to your office, your mayor's office, he has conduit to your board of ed, he's a conduit to the housing authorities. So while we have, you know, one in each entity, to disperse that information to all the councilwomen and councilwomen in the room, certainly gets watered down, and everybody's looking for information. And I'm not saying more people involved in the one-on-one types of relationships, but certainly trying to funnel that information through the county OEM seem to work fairly well. Again, can we do things better? We're trying to figure that out every day as we go through these types of meetings and get feedback from everyone here, but I can tell you that we're always looking to improve, you know, communications. I mean, that was loud and clear to us, and I think after the storm's effect came through, we're looking at that as an opportunity to improve also, and we'll look for any suggestions that you offer to us also. We're not here to tell you that we have all the answers, but like you mentioned, some things that people were talking about, there's a lot of things that people were talking about, you know, within this storm, and one of the things that you didn't mention was, you know, why don't we put up different types of poles versus wood poles? So many wood poles fell down over the course of the storm, and it makes sense when people say things like that, but then you have to take into account what choices are you making, wood poles versus concrete poles versus something else. And I did a little investigating myself, and been finding out that why exactly do we put these types of poles up in where the cars and trucks are? It's because they give way. If a car hits them, 1928, someone made the decision in New Jersey to put wood poles up for life and safety type measures. So if we're going to make those changes, you have to understand, you know, what's the counterbalance, or what you're trying to do. And I'm just using that as an example, not saying that's something that we want to do, but when you have these epic storms that come out, everyone tries to go, oh, that's very, very, let's, you know, do different things with poles, and at what cost is that to the society? And again, if there's any suggestions that we want to talk about here tonight, we'll be more than willing to listen, and we certainly appreciate everyone's patience for that time.
Okay. You have two things that you touched on there that we discussed, and we hope you could answer to. The one big issue about manpower, it seems to us that over the years, you've lost people, you have less manpower, is that something that's hampering your ability? I mean, not that, but we know for this storm, this was an, you know, off-the-charts type of storm, and nobody was prepared for, you know, with the severity that came, but we're just concerned with other storms, but you have the ability to respond, you know, with the reduction of manpower that you had.
That's a great question. When we talk about reduction of manpower, we've probably had about 700 lineman type in the utility for many, many decades. When we talk about manpower losses, it's more in the mass type associates, like management type associates, certainly not the feet on the street.
Another technician job, too.
Just to give you an example of this particular storm, we had over 1,000 extra linemen or technician types, as you just said, that were already in New Jersey waiting for the storm to hit, okay? So that was a compliment prior to the storm. We had 1,000 folks, by the end of the first week, we had over 4,000, all right? So when you try to anticipate, you know, the storm of all storms, you know, we felt pretty confidently that we would gear up, more so than any utility around here, for this type of event. So what we have is, we call it MOOCs, all right? It's just back, like we use mutual aid for the Mid-Atlantic region, okay? So all utilities in all the areas get together and have conference calls to discuss who you can send, and we've gone as far as New Orleans, we send crews to others as well, you know, when we have the ability to do that. But we had asked for and got over 1,000 technicians into New Jersey housed and ready prior to the storm. And I'm not even talking about tree technicians, I'm not talking about tree surgeons or artists, those came prior, and we had hundreds of them also. So when we say we have 4,500 extra men and women on the street during this storm, besides our normal complement, 100, we had folks that were running divisions of mutual aid crews in territories, which, again, I've only been with public service for 25 years, but you know, a hundred year storm was over three times in the last 15 months. We had hurricane raining last year, we had Halloween snowstorm, when the trees were filled with leaves and the snow came, and then we had hurricane sand. So how did that happen in the last 15 months? We equate that to the new normal, but we try to anticipate mutual aid assistance, the best form, the best everything, and our president has echoed every time I've spoken to him in the past few months, this may be the new normal, and we will not lack for manpower in any scenario that we're looking to encounter.
And then the second thing that comes up is, we do it about priorities, and you know, hospitals being a priority, and you have this police station, things of that nature. We had great difficulty with our senior centers here, and getting them up and running. And for us, seniors, they're near and true to our hearts, we have a lot of seniors who have many different illnesses, and are in different mechanisms, you know, running on different machines and what have you, yeah, difficult, we do that. What can we do in the future for our seniors to make sure that these centers get up, if it's that priority list, or some other way to make sure? We were called home, the housing authority, and it was also making contact with you, and it has a very different time, we're very concerned about that.
Yeah, I can speak to that.
Yeah.
As I mentioned earlier, on the conflict with the housing authority, and as you can imagine, the storm so epic, my contact, the county attorney, couldn't even make back to the city for this, because of her residence location, ran down the Jersey Shore, of course. I was still with the gentleman, Gene Kohl, and I thought our communication was, actually was very, very well. We were in touch multiple times every day. What we found regarding these senior centers, and I'm talking about the Dallas City, 30th Church Street, 70th Street, 612 Salem Avenue, those three locations had backup generators, however, they were fully full of lights and water outlets, okay? I think what became an issue during this storm was the lack of diesel fuel out there. Remember the poor Elizabeth, for the first time in my time here at PSCG, or since I lived in Elizabeth, I've never seen a battery do the surge of water. That, something ended in the port to the point where that all those pumps and valves were inoperable, flooded, had to be dried out, tested and placed, leaving a deficit of diesel and gasoline shipments able to handle Elizabeth forward north. And when I spiced, I just spoke to a mayor personally during the storm, with a Chinese lady of public affairs, and certainly I expressed my concern regarding this senior centers, especially when the electric started dropping, you know, late in that first week, since certainly none of the locations had backup provisions. So we discussed bringing shelters, we gave some shelters for them, but what we came to agree on was that the importance to get those ports cleaned up and the material cleared, so those deliveries could be made both in diesel and gasoline inside, get those generators back up, and get the gas station back open. I should imagine even the OEM centers were running low on diesel-powered generators. So certainly we prioritize that. I met Captain, alongside the generation, with a crew from Mississippi. Some of the stuff I can do to prevent that, we pulled a large branch off the bicycle backup church location, for example, just before eruption day, and, you know, I think it would have behooved the housing authority had that tree, those trees trimmed around that area prior to the storm. So there's probably some improvements on both sides that could have been made. The Salem Avenue location was kissing park power, so I've been happily building that up, you know? These were very isolated instances. When we certainly made restorations, in fact, I should see on those handouts, you know, we go from the transmission side and the substations and circuits, and then we're able to gather information on individual services, of course, which we did in late in Week 1 of storm, allowing us to redress some of those locations. But of course, there's certainly unforeseen in terms of the magnitude of the storm that was on.
And you raise a great point about the senior centers. When we talk about hospitals, the one thing that we always talk about was, typically a hospital is fed from one of our transmission type lines of 26,000 volts service, or at minimum 13,000 volts service that goes into a primary facility at hospitals. These senior centers are fed secondary type services, so they're at a lower tier of voltage, okay? And as I just alluded to, you know, we're building from 138 down to 69,000, down to 26,000, down to 13,000 volts. So it's easier for us to get power back to the 26,000, because it's part of our whole system. So when we're talking about 13 kV or 4 kV type services, whether it's residential or commercial types, it's easier for us to understand it now, but it certainly wasn't at a level of priority that we had ever given it before, and that's absolutely something that we're going to be looking, you know, looking towards in the future.
Yeah, well, we would, again, would appreciate that very much, our seniors that are very near and dear, and I understand the housing authority, they're also looking at how they can develop things better or differently, to help improve in the future, and hopefully not have to go through this situation again. The Kennedy Arms Crisis was down eight days. For a lot of the citizens, it was very difficult, and unfortunately, that's their home, a lot of them didn't want to leave.
My father's 94 years old, took me five days to get him out of his house that he lives in by himself. He wouldn't, he just wouldn't leave. They'll wait for public service.
Yeah, and that's how many seniors were, that they just, they all want to leave, and the housing authority and the city, you know, we work together, or the diesel that they needed and what have you, can't keep it going as much as they could.
You raise another great issue when you talk about contingency type plans. That's an exercise that maybe folks weren't taking as seriously as they should have been, you know? We go through contingency type plans twice a year with the word helping tools, and they actually come into public service and observe. We come up with a scenario, and a plane hits, a major substation, White Mark Airport knocks out major portions of the area, what are you going to do with public service? And we go through these exercises. We actually go through our outage management system and see what customers would be affected in that type of scenario, and try to anticipate what kind of issues that we have. These are not pretty questions when you're trying to address, like, and when somebody's telling us there's going to be a four to six foot surge of the water that they were saying prior to the storm, and we get 13 and a half feet, how high do you build the sandbags before something happens? We've never seen this before, but we cannot say that anymore, so we will look for ways to improve, I can assure you that, and communication will be one of those bad answers.
Okay. And nothing I don't turn up to our colleagues, is there any questions, our colleagues, like Councilman Keating first, or Councilman Groban?
I just have two areas concerning what was communications. The city has a service called NIXLE, N-I-X-L-E dot com, I don't know if you've ever heard of that or not, but residents can sign up to get text messages of various public safety issues. In this case, with landlines being down, and internet being down, cell phones were godsend, really. So the thing would be, if PSCG or if you, in conjunction with the state, could think about the system where you could register folks, and then as the storm progresses, get these text message alerts out. Now, the thing is, it's a very arduous task to register people, but you've got to hold an audion, you send a bill to the house every month, so if you have an insert in the bill that says, "Sign up for the PSCG alert service during a major storm," you could actually be texting messages out. And obviously, this is a lot of money, so I think you'd probably have to see if this state might push it. Just let me finish the thread on. The thing about this is that as I experienced the storm, people were very, very lenient and very, very forgiving in the early days of the storm. I really didn't get that many calls about when will my power be coming back on, or I've heard this rumor and that rumor, until five, six, seven, eight. And as you got later into it, the rumors got wilder and wilder. So communication of this sort will enable all of us to put at least some of those, respond to it, but I have one more point.
Yeah, great. I'll even go one step further than the text messages, because I can tell you right now, text messaging wasn't godsend to me, because a lot of times my phone didn't work, but I could text. For my younger PSCG years, they tweet, you know, I don't tweet, but a lot of people do tweet, and we had this Twitter page set up where people were actually, you know, having a two-way dialogue with folks in our main office and getting information. The frustration that seemed to come out on that real-time information was, we said a global thing, we had 90% of folks, we had 91%, at day eight, people want to know about Main Street, they want to know about Jackson Avenue, where is my power at that point? And we didn't have that level of real time, only because we had to redo, typically, a circuit was being completed from the substation all the way out. By day eight, we were sending packets of work out to the forces as a whole packet and saying, fix everything. We were sending a technician, the engineering technician, a tree surgeon, a pole setter, everybody that needed anything. It wasn't like, oh, the overhead had to be here, the underground had to be here, we sent the battalion out at that point to fix everything.
But between this global thing, where everybody's out, and the street level thing, the NIXLE is structured in such a way... is structured in such a way that if there's a traffic light out in Almore and West Jersey, the people in that neighborhood get the alert. In other words, if you investigate social media, text, tweet, rest of it, it's malleable and you can actually have various levels of messages that you're getting at. But the point is that when I'm getting a call seven weeks and I'm saying we don't have power and people are saying, I'm hearing that it's going to be another two weeks, that's just absurd. And some level of communication would help alleviate some of that. And the thing about text messages is seniors have, most everybody has a cellphone, but you need a data plan to tweet on your cellphone and all the rest of it, that's a little more complicated. The other thing with regard to communication is if you could code, again, in your bill, if you can build a database, so you send a person, a senior citizen, a bill and say, are you on medical equipment? Are you on equipment that requires electricity?
Life support.
Life support. If you build a database of those people in conjunction with the state police or the municipalities in the state, whatever, it's not, you're building a situation where now we're not guessing about folks who are on life support. Now you've got a little bit of a better handle on it. And I think that investigating, registering those kinds of things.
We do have that type of capability. Unfortunately, when people move from one place to another, they don't share that type of information with us. A great point, I mean, we go with P6s in our world, right? It's a priority, six, which means that house or that residence is on life support. It's only as accurate as the information that we're given and I am shudder to think that if we work on that solely, it would not be, it would not be good, only because that real-time information is much more important. Honestly, I wish I had a thousand more dentists, because I could put four of them in every city across this state and get that level of communication that is truly needed. I always remind, one councilwoman spoke about, Eileen Lay, Eileen is our regional public affairs manager for the city of Elizabeth as well as other cities within Union County, and we work very closely together. And I can tell you, the regional public affairs group with the large customer support group that I manage work closely together in trying to disseminate information and create a sense of urgency within the divisions themselves to bring a level of expectation out when, you know, President Gonzalez said, "I need help at this senior center." You know, that's what our job was. And I can tell you, and what you just said is very accurate. By day five, everybody's patient for the first two days. Starting with day three and day four. By day five, words are being said that have come out of thousands of men and women that have never heard those words before. And that's the truth about every storm. It really is. If we can't get it done in five days, then we're a coward, because after that, all bets are off. And, you know, at day 12, when I had power to a senior assisted living home, and I was frantic myself, because I actually sent one of our question residents out, because he was in the area and he asked me about a different town in Union County, and where are you having problems right now? I wanted to go out and talk to somebody. And I had another gentleman similar to Dennis in another town, I said, Joe, go see, you know, Joe McQueen in Scotts Plains right now, because he's at a senior house of assisted living that hasn't had power in 12 days. And we had gotten a tweet from someone's daughter, granddaughter, saying, "My grandmother has been in this assisted living for 12 days, she hasn't been able to get out of her house, she hasn't..." And we knew, I mean, that circuit was desolate. Hundreds of trees were down, probably 80 poles on one circuit were down. We had to rebuild the world in that section. And that was one of the last circuits that came on in New Jersey. And I'm getting tweets, I called the young lady just to tell her, "I got your message." She tweeted back to our general office, and somebody called me and said, "Who are you talking to?" I said, "I just picked up the phone, the caller's room." I felt bad because, you know, her grandmother was in there, I just wanted to talk to her. She tweeted back to the general office like that, right after I got off her phone, to say, "I just spoke to Ed Zalley, you know, I appreciate the comments." I wish I could do that for everybody, but, you know, when you have, I'll just give you an example for your tears. The sixth day Saturday, we had 5,800 poles, we answered 218,000 calls that day. That's six days after the storm. It's on Earth, but we did our best.
Thank you, Mr. President. Casa de Rojo, Casa de Rojo.
Thank you, Mr. President. General, my biggest concern goes back to the first comment I spoke about. I've been at council for a few years. When I first came on city council, any one of us would have an issue, which is pretty likely to happen, and we'd make phone calls to somebody PSENG, and within two, three days, everyone was pissed. Ten years going back, that started changing. All of a sudden now, we had to send the fax to a lot of the street lines in parting, then they were handed, then they sent another fax in, now they're leaving the average size of seven to ten days. So clearly, there's a manpower issue with PSENG. Your stocks keep going up, shareholders keep making money, but the service is adorable. You guys had 600 of your own men, that's it. That's all you have now, 600 of your men you were relying upon. First day, I had my email, your first email, I finally got power, was that 600 of your own men, you were counting on 900 outside of that, that's not acceptable. There has to be men on duty at PSENG. If this is going to be the norm, we can't rely on everybody else to come in and help us out. You have to have manpower, labor department. Or for example, there was a big change with the last storm, where they put in all these new poles throughout the deep core, everything, something like 70 or 80 poles. It took you guys two years, two years to finally go back and clean up the broken concrete and clay that were at the bottom of these poles and left behind, because the type of coal is not the same type of clay that's on the seven. In the meantime, all that clay that everybody's been torching for two years, we got residents complaining, we got old poles that are up. Then we talked about communication. You know, I don't follow communication, except when we're at it. I lead lady in all of your departments, we're talking with the mayor every day, I know, but we were told Thursday, power on the street, we had Thursday came, nothing. Then Friday, power being, Friday came, nothing. That's not good communication. It evolved everywhere there, they're great, but I can talk to all and get better information, because whatever we receive from the mayor, from you guys over those conferences, we pass it on to the public. That we look like idiots because we just gave them all the information, but that's what you're told. So it's not that it wasn't good communication, it's just not accurate communication. And I really think, and I keep everything myself, but I really think you guys have the backwater generation order, if this is going to be the norm, you need to hire more men. We can't rely on 600 men to run the PSENG individually. Our town for a while, we've had just in Elizabeth, over a thousand houses built in the last 12 years, and other towns have expanded. And in the meantime, the workforce is not less, it's just not going to work. Guys really have to look at hiring more men. I know you guys had some issues years ago, because I have some friends that work for PSENG, that's important, morale is down, we're going to produce less, I mean, it's reality in front of business. So I really think that that's the main issue that your company has to deal with. Forget about, I really forget about Sammy, just the day-to-day tree that we're talking about earlier, around senior level. It used to be PSENG had manpower, tree trees, they were caught on the water, the water trees, that was all going on, you don't have that manpower. So what ends up happening, when we do get these storms, these trees fall, no problems, they're going to be back, we can have you maintaining it all. So it's not, let's worry about next one. To me, it's let's worry about the day-to-day, but you guys don't have manpower.
That's a great point, Casa de Rojo. And that's what we need to partner together. We talk about tree type scenarios, and I'm not using Elizabeth as an example, because I don't know for a fact, but there's a lot of communities in the state that don't allow us or limit our abilities to tree trim. And because of their tree societies or whatever that manage the trees.
Positsions.
It might not exist in Elizabeth, but you know, Elizabeth doesn't have power, you just come from Elizabeth. If towns and neighboring towns don't let us tree trim and they're losing circuits because of other trees in the area, we want to work with everyone, believe me, I'm not looking for excuses. I'm looking for ways that we can work together here. And if it's tree trim, and doing the best we can to make sure the reliability for the city of Elizabeth as well as every city and town in the state is going to improve, that's what we're going to try to do. I can't answer the questions about manpower here tonight, but I can tell you, in terms of our union personnel, I've been here 25 years, we've never had a strike in 25 years that I've been here. So it's hard for me to comment on that. And I'll be more than willing to share with the councilman any types of those type comments, I just don't know where it's coming from. And again, when we talk about everything else and all, I'm not looking to point a finger at anybody here. We need to work together in every scenario, and I'll be looking forward to working with the city of Elizabeth also.
Anything else, Casa de Rojo?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, Ed, I'm so pleased that you guys stopped in. I just want to go back to the citizens of Illinois just once, especially as one of your chairs, you mentioned the fact that, not that I was aware, because owners will probably see calls about the citizens of Illinois in your chair, before the time that you were there, if I'm not incorrect. You said that you had backwater generation, just only for the hallway, right?
Right, I said the senior citizens, that that generation hallway lights and all.
We all can learn from a storm, say, the same in the other storms. What you're doing to improve on that, knowing what you're doing there, knowing that you need to be better than that, and are you in a process of making improvement, not too hard on that. What we're doing, because we can't wait until another storm gets, whether it's five days from now or five years from now, we need to start thinking about what we do to replace or get better backwater generation, generating not just the whole, but come to a whole, say, what do you do, are you doing anything on it? Because I got that question some days ago.
Yes, thank you, Casa de Rojo, that's a great question. Just a couple things. The generation of the senior centers is actually on the customer side, that's provided by the council, that's not some of the PSENG programs. I think it was a great exercise in the sense that you all learned what their passing was and what they didn't have, and how large their full tanks were. What we do, in terms of education, and Casa de Rojo referred to the energy living even if you send out on a regular basis to all our customers that are building, some of our community leaders or large ones and so on, is that we can select partners. And backwater generators, as you can imagine, have become very popular, certainly everything in this, as well as before, we put this stuff out about getting natural gas-powered backwater generators, about bringing electricity to the consumer power of the building, or certainly vital functions of the building. Certainly, all these senior centers, as Ed mentioned earlier, are priorities of customers. If you notice on the meter, they will write the chlorofuricant indicator. So as well as communicating with folks, certain materials and equipment, they can install at their facilities, or some can there to provide support services in terms of upgrading their natural gas if they're in their territory, and providing efficient means of redundancy or un-need for other processes.
What was your show? I'm concerned about have you guys give study on upgrades, and why you were, I don't know, last time you did an upgrade to your system, you know, such as the substations, or that grid that committed from London and elsewhere to Elizabeth. Have you given study, and when was the last time you did study, and when do you expect to improve the substation, whether you were monitoring an area that get flooded, that had problems, even just heavy outpour, or are you doing this study to show the distance on the grid's location in areas?
We're always doing that, just so you understand, like, when we talk about 13 kV loop or 4 kV for that, or 13,000 volts that serve mostly residents of Elizabeth and the city of Elizabeth, they are all fed with dual type feeds, okay? So if one goes out, there's a recloser at a certain point. So if a tree falls down on this street and it's ramming out, its power goes off on a higher circuit, and then five, seven seconds later, the recloser opens up and closes twice the poles one more time. And if this point or this section of the circuit is where the problem is, the other section will light again, okay? So there is that built-in redundancy. Now, how much redundancy does one need? I mean, do we need three circuits to support one area? It's all at a cost. I mean, all these things that we're talking about are at a certain cost. We're trying to keep costs down, prices, and natural gas and electricity are going to come down in the previous years, and we certainly don't want to impose something on someone that they are not willing to bet for. So we're simply delivering type of service. We are looking at the hardening of our infrastructures at the station level, at the substation, at switching station level, as we speak, based on, like, just when we talked about storm action here, you know, when the impending storm was coming in, we had an opportunity to harden some of the areas that had previously gotten impacted. They did impact this time. It was everywhere else, anything out by the water bay, and Elizabeth Bay came in and surged in 75 years, these places had never been rain, had never been approached with these levels of storm damage, ever, and the issue that they were there. So we're taking a look at everything right now, and that's going to be discussed with the water power utilities on an ongoing basis. So another great comment, and that's something that we're looking right now.
But those kind of things right now, with storm conditions, which you have, you'll learn from, so now we need to build on that. I think we can't wait another five years before you know, I would say, oh, we always have problems with the people, we don't, we don't expect them to be correct.
Yes, yes, correct. There are some stations that are.
Sure, sure.
Absolutely. Pivotal, pivotal question.
Which is one of those that I hope you can be the move race on this way, or some of that.
Pivotal, I don't know about crazy or move, but we're certainly looking hard.
I hate to say that, because when your president, Mr. Ross de Rosa, he indicated, that's one of the things that KCT when he gave who was making their statements at the Senate committee meetings, the president said, that's one of the things you guys were looking at. Absolutely. He moves to raising those substations to prevent flooding. Some of the other things that he says, there's no immediate way. Some of the other things that he says, there's no immediate way to tell if customers don't have power. Which is a big problem.
That's the smart meter, huh?
That's the smart meter, exactly. And that could cause a sudden, you know, a done. So I have to say that in the time of the future, huh?
And that's Councilman Grover, looking to tree-trim, smart meters. Those are probably two of the hottest topics that we're pushing right now. And we're looking to go forward.
I want to advise you to do not wait another five weeks, go and move states around if you can.
Honestly, I hope we do it very soon, and I hope we never have to use them. And I say that only for my own part, because I don't ever want to see something like this again. Two weeks is absolutely insane for us.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah, Councilman Grover?
Sorry, just one more, I have another one, following what I said before. Just to be easy, this is a big example of why I support advertising, or company marketing. At two situations, one is announced on Geneva Street, Elizabeth, where the whole street was on. This one gentleman's house, for whatever reason, he knows, because it's having what it was, requires that no lights go out on that block, and they can come back on. Somebody has a plan, they call, get a reset button, and then his house go. Same thing happened on 200 block of car, it's like eight houses. All they had to do is go through the hole, there's a church, a church one. So except they had linemen from Maryland, from Delaware, they don't know the churches. They have no idea, they're coming out, they're walking into a door, they have no idea what's going on. So those are the type of things, and only if you are a regular lines and you're working in streets on a regular basis, would you know these type of things. And that's why it's important that that department start raising their version of manpower.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Mr. President, I was going to be extremely brief, but I don't need your time in the end, I speak. Just take it in. But basically, I just want to piggyback on what my council colleagues and Councilwoman Randy Grover. The storm, the hurricane, is the hurricane, but the day-to-day functions of running PSC and G. I've been around for 20 years under the Council, and it's drastically changed. And that is the problem, the day-to-day functions, the constant blackouts and brownouts throughout the neighborhood for no apparent reason. The trees overlapping on so many of the wires and lines, and it's like, okay, you can't cut it until PSC and G comes out, because it's on a live wire, we don't know the wire, the wire. The wires live, those are the issues that really begin to bug at your customers. And then you get this massive storm, and the communication was totally, it was miscommunication. It wasn't a lack of it, it was just constantly miscommunication. Constantly calling by the residents who were able to get through and told, well, you're not a priority. There's no such thing as a priority, even though we're living in a senior citizen's building, and none of the senior citizens want to leave, you're still not a priority. That type of information really did not help after the six, seven, eight, the ninth day. It's just, PSC and G needs to wake up, it's the 21st century now. And we have solar storms, and we have global warming, and we have storms, and snowstorms in October in New Jersey. And PSC and G needs to wake up and see that we're in the 21st century, and we're being impacted by elements that we cannot control. Only thing we can control is how we deal with those elements. And we're hoping that PSC and G can really go back and take off the 20th century glasses, and put on the 21st century glasses, and really begin to provide services for the future, because that's where we're headed, you know? It was a hurricane, it was a category zero hurricane, and we need to realize that. And it's coming, and stuff is coming, and happened last October with the snowstorm. So we're beginning to see that it's occurring, things are occurring in the elements that we cannot control. And we're hoping that our energy provider, PSC and G, can, you know, really step up to the 21st century. The manpower, my colleague is 100% correct. I had people call me today before election day, who were from Indiana trying to vote for the presidential election, because they're here working for PSC and G. It's scary, where we have people here in the state of New Jersey who are unemployed, who are looking for work. Able-bodied men and women who could be working for PSC and G, who could be on a contingency basis. PSC and G can provide training for those men and women, and have them available when these type of issues happen. The people that they know the neighborhoods, and can come in and really help out, and be a great assistance to the community. That's what we're looking for, that's what we're looking for going forward. So I just hope that you continue to have a good holiday, and enjoy the rest of this year. We look forward to working with you. We want to be co-partners in this, as we provide services to our community. But we need PSC and G to step up to the 21st century, because that's where we're at right now. We're 2012, and six days away, we'll be in 2013. And we need PSC and G to be there with us, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Okay, tell me, if you have anything else you'd like to add. Well, I think you've heard from us, and the major concerns that we had. Again, I'm sure this is probably crossing throughout the state of New Jersey, you know, the circle concerns. You know, but I really would like to thank you once again for coming out and sharing what this is here, and to hear your sound, and hopefully you can take this back to public service, and share some of this, and we can begin to, and continue to work together. So we can have a brighter future together.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to the approval of the minutes, and the motion control.
So, Mr. President.
Move the second, it is the conference meetings on May 1st, June 6th, 19th, July 3rd. Breakfast meetings on May 8th, 22nd, June 12th, 26th, and July 24th. Are there any comments?
Yes, sir.
Seeing none, vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Adusty?
Aye.
Councilman Grover?
Aye, for those that are either, I don't remember that one back.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Grover?
I've got it, Councilman Grover, same thing, I was made, but sure. So, the word of the ten, yes, aye.
And President Gonzalez?
Aye.
We will now move on to public hearing.
amend ordinance number 4351. amend chapter 2.56, Article 9, Section 340 of Code of the City of Elizabeth, entitled outside employment contracted off-duty employment specifically to increase the administrative rate to $5 per hour.
You heard the reading of ordinance number 4351. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on ordinance number 4351? Once again, you heard the reading of ordinance number 4351. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on ordinance number 4351? Seeing none, I call to public hearing, an ordinance number 4351.
amend ordinance number 4352. amend ordinance number 3750. adopted August 23rd, 2005, authorizing the adoption of the Duran redevelopment plan, specifically to adopt the revised redevelopment plans in its entirety due to a fire that damaged and destroyed structures in the original plan pursuant to planning board recommendation.
You heard the reading of ordinance number 4352. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on ordinance number 4352? Please go forward. Please take your name and address, correct.
Thank you. My name is Jennifer Smith, I'm an attorney for giving to the city of New York, New Jersey. I'm here saying I have the Stop &amp; Shop supermarket company, Jock Raisers supermarket at 801 New York Avenue. That property is adjacent to the Duran redevelopment area. First, I'm from the borough of Passaic. Jennifer Vaughn, who is a partner in the land that owns 801 New York Avenue, dearly wants to meet with you, to mention his comments and opposition to the ordinance. Unfortunately, too, the wonderful Sonny wants to come. He did some lecture part of the rally, I was just going to meet him. Insated that he would like to come speak to us. Let's move on to Savitcham. Savitcham does possess a purpose. We operate a supermarket in the north of Elizabeth area, and have done so for many years. In fact, we are recently made a huge investment in upgrading facilities, and we hope to be a part of the community for many years now. Back in 2005, this council approved a redevelopment. And at that time, the vision for redevelopment to bring a redevelopment area was created by a transit village to create residential units, maybe 700 of them, to have mixed uses, variety of operations, to create this type of development where people could live, where they could dine, where they could shop, where they could work, or where they could conveniently commute to other areas. There's a unique opportunity. The Duran redevelopment area is a very large parcel, and it's very close to the north of Elizabeth train station. It's the opportunity to create the type of transit village that's been successful in other municipalities, both of Jersey City and Rhode Island. Tight package to be, and we hope the city will embrace. Now, nobody, where the property is turned away from kids and children. They posed the development of this ordinance facility where the first phase to tear down the historic structure of the property and replace it with a C and parking, 900,000 square meters. And two big box stores. There would be no residential units in first place. There would be no buyer community that would help enhance the presence of our, and enhance the businesses of our area. Instead of being a place where people could shop and dine and live, it's a place where people can pull up, park, load up their cars, and leave. As I said before, Stop &amp; Shop is committed to this neighborhood. It's been here for a number of years, it was here for years ago. They're so committed to the neighborhood, they have employed two professionals. One is Mr. Peter Zalik, he is an expert in residential real estate in northern New Jersey. And while we all know that the market's not the same, but it was in 2005, he's not a market scientist. And he's indicated to us that there's plenty to make for residents, especially close proximity to the transit train stop. And he's actually provided a license date in December 26th of this year. And I've updated a moment, and I'd like to hand it out to the National Council. But we also have a setup. Savitcham has employed a structural engineer. We understand that it's a terrible fire property, that destroyed a portion of the building, and that since then, that portion of the building has been demolished. But this is a historic structure, great significance. This is the place where the first automobiles were made. This is the place where some of the first parts were military aircraft. Place where many people in the city of Elizabeth have a family, a mother, a neighbor, have come to recognize this symbol of the city. And the structural care has gone out. We say build, build, and take a lease, that a portion of the city has escaped. You know, back in 2005, there's the idea that you could safely, should use a portion of the building, adapt or reuse, to do industrial-style block apartments. And our structural engineer has taken a little of the property, making it best still not, still not just to preserve a little piece of history, to preserve some of the great things that have been there. So that, you know, future generations will know that this is not just two big box stores and C and parking, but this was a vibrant industrial area. So if the adults and relatives can hand out those two letters to the council, consider it.
This is a good one.
What we're asking for tonight is not that there would never be a redevelopment of this city, but we're asking the council to just take a breath, pause, to not adopt the redevelopment of this city. So give us an opportunity, please, come to me, or maybe we can see this best, the most appropriate way of looking for, whether it's your business administrator, legal counsel, planning department, or maybe we can discuss. Give us a chance to meet, to talk about the long-term vision of this property. Because we believe that by a transit village is a better option than what the current proposal is taking place. And we don't want the city to quickly, too quickly jump in the first offer and end up with big box stores with no promise of any future development. There's no guarantee of any future phases beyond two big box stores that are constructed as we have. So yes, we should not go in this way, let us meet. And hopefully, we can all come to a agreement, so that the neighborhood can turn into a vibrant transit village, and continue to grow, and Savitcham can be part of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak on ordinance number 4352? Seeing none, I call to public hearing, on ordinance number 4352.
ordinance number 4353. amend chapter 10.16.10, Code of the City of Elizabeth, to establish four ton weightmen in promoting vehicles, etc., government delivery on First Street between Elizabeth Avenue and Trunk Street.
You heard the reading of ordinance number 4353. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on ordinance number 4353? Once again, you've heard the reading of ordinance number 4353. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on ordinance number 4353? Seeing none, I call to public hearing, on ordinance number 4352. With the consent of my comments, I will disperse with the reading of the petitions and communications and reports of city officers, and move on to ordinances on First Street.
ordinance number 4351. amend chapter 2.56, Article 9, Section 340 of Code of the City of Elizabeth, entitled outside employment contracted off-duty employment specifically to increase the administrative rate to $5 per hour.
You've heard the reading of ordinance number 4351. What is your question, what are the orders for vote? Move the second, are there any comments? Seeing none, vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Adusty?
Aye.
Councilman Grover?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Grover?
Aye.
President Gonzalez?
Aye. The ordinance passed on the final reading.
ordinance number 4352. amend ordinance number 3750, adopted August 23rd, 2005, authorizing the adoption of the Duran redevelopment plan, specifically to adopt the revised redevelopment plans in its entirety due to a fire that damaged and destroyed structures in the original plan pursuant to planning board recommendation.
You've heard the reading of ordinance number 4352. What is your question?
What are the orders for vote?
Move the second, are there any comments?
Mr. President?
Councilman Grover?
I just wanted to make a couple of points on the ordinance. The information we received from the counselor who came on to speak talks about a marketable study, marketability study, that was done in 2005. And back in 2005, for all of those who are familiar, we had great presidential army going on, not only in the state of Elizabeth, but throughout the whole country. Nothing was built there. We're now seven years later, and we got somebody coming out telling us that we should give it another try, a little bit more time. We're beyond that at this point. We had the building, it was beautiful, I didn't want to have five hundred in the house, with the mixed use, and the air condos, but nothing ever got done. Unfortunately, this city, over the years, we've had developers coming for, finding wars for us, who have promised the world, and they never delivered. So here we are, seven years later, waiting for this beautiful project to happen. Never, you can't have a property that could be used for something, or some life. Right now, there's no life there at all. Maybe it's going to be a big box stores, maybe it's going to be something else, but something has to be done in this project. If the speaker, his clients can work out a deal, who's been out, and whatever the thing happens, it'll be. I like Stop &amp; Shop, they're a very good resident neighbor in our town. No disrespect to them. Reality is... Reality is, trains pass by the train station, nothing has been done for less than a year. Thank you, Council. Any other comments? Councilman Keenan?
I'd like to also thanks Stop and Shop for their contribution to the city of Elizabeth and the presentation we heard. In point of fact, future, future stages of this project will include housing. And it is more than likely, housing will be a part of this process. Number two, Stop and Shop is a for-profit business, and there's no discussion about the impact that additional box stores might have on their profitability. For example, if a store like a Walmart were to come in, part of the things that a Walmart will sell are groceries. So I have to think that Stop and Shop's thinking includes, well, if competition comes up right next door, maybe this could impact our business a little bit. Having said that, in my view, the more retail opportunities, the better. And it might actually in the long run be good for Stop and Shop. The third thing is, my understanding is that Stop and Shop is fighting lawsuit to prevent the city from going ahead with this redevelopment project. So on the one hand, they're approaching us with kid gloves, urging us to take the high road, when in fact, they may be suing us to stop us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council. Any other comments? Seem none, local?
Councilwoman Perkins-Adusty?
Aye.
Councilman Grover?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Goldman?
Aye.
President Gonzalez?
Aye. The resolution passes on the final reading.
Orders.
I mean, the orders.
Ordinance number forty-three fifty-three. amend chapter ten point sixteen point ten of code of the city of Elizabeth to establish four ton weight limit for motor vehicles, except for pickup and delivery on First Street between Elizabeth and Trundle Street.
You've heard the reading of ordinance number forty-three fifty-three. What is your pleasure?
Orders for vote.
Move the second, are there any comments?
President. Councilman Grover?
I have to make a comment, just for the residents at home. We tried to eliminate trucks down the port back in nineteen ninety-nine. This council passed an order to go for this one. Now unfortunately, we were overruled by the federal department transportation and the state utility. I'm hoping that this time around, we have some support at the federal level, at the state level, to, for that to understand that the residents down the port do not want some trucks coming down the streets. We've kept numerous complaints, the new school down on First Street, the recreation center, buy-in to housing. We just don't need trucks coming down our port, down, down on First Street. I'm hoping that this will go up the firewall and it will stay somewhere because, I just want the residents to realize that even though we are passing this ordinance, it's not an empty deal until the federal and state partnership gives us the okay.
Are there any comments? Seem none, local?
Councilwoman Perkins-Adusty?
Aye.
Councilman Grover?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Goldman?
Aye.
President Gonzalez?
Aye. The ordinance passes on the final reading. I need a motion to suspend the votes, we have to.
Councilwoman, Mr. President?
Move the second, local?
Councilwoman Perkins-Adusty?
Aye.
Councilman Grover?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Goldman?
Aye.
President Gonzalez?
Aye.
The first item, letter dated December twenty-first, two thousand and twelve, from the director of public works recommending awarding contract to Regional Industries LLC Elizabeth for the collection, hauling and disposal of solid waste and recycling materials throughout the entire city, including housing authority buildings, or private public schools, and board of education facilities for a five-year period commencing January one, two thousand and thirteen, to December thirty-one, two thousand and seventeen, for a cost per year of four million two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, to be renewed every year thereafter in accordance with the scheduled prices submitted at the time of bid, totaling twenty-one million one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
You've heard the reading of the resolution, what is your pleasure? What resolution for vote? We'll just, we have to, we'll just do our time.
The second item is to support legislation for corporations not receiving the same constitutional rights as natural persons do, and that of course, money is not speech. Limits on political spending will promote the goals of the First Amendment by ensuring that all citizens regardless of wealth have an opportunity to have their political views heard.
Now, you've heard the reading of the resolution, what is your pleasure?
President for vote.
Move the second, are there any comments? Seem none, local?
Councilwoman Perkins-Adusty?
Aye.
Councilman Grover?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Goldman?
Aye.
President Gonzalez?
Aye. Oh, resolution's passed. We will now move on to the new business.